Good evening, everybody. Do you have the minutes?
I got minutes from the, I don't know, I didn't print them on, I could get them on line.
Did you read them?
Yes. The two special meetings.
Yeah. Okay, any comments? I guess we'll just stay together and if you guys have any corrections, Jessica.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Yeah, you have it first.
My motion approved on January 6th, regular meeting, then we had two budget special meeting budgets on January 9th, motion to approve the budget.
Okay. I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sean, yeah, just.
Did well.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment? Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Number one is wondering, should we take up a collection so your daughter can get some sweatpants?
You raise them tough here.
All right, anyone else? Public comment? Okay. Okay, we have an assessment settlement for WFS, and I've asked Marilyn Baumann to come, who is our tax assessor, to help explain the situation. So, Ms. Marilyn, you want to?
Oh, should I go from 13? I don't know what you want me to.
Um, we need, why don't, yeah, why don't you start with a little bit of background? So, I don't know how familiar Sean is.
I don't think they are familiar.
Okay.
Okay, so, in 2013, there was a stipulated judgment, as you probably remember, filed. And so that precipitated my being able to, it changed the use of the property. So, I was able to go back in and look at it and see, um, the areas of restoration and active mining and so on and so forth. So, I was able to change the assessment, which I did. I consulted with Jeff Jacobson and Doug Anderson at the time. And so I was able to change the assessment, and obviously it was upward. So, I had affected those changes on the 2013, the 2014 grant list because I was the only thing that they could beat on. And being this a rebuild year, that all goes away. So, he tried to appeal the assessment, you know, we tried to talk about what the differences were on the phone, and we couldn't come to an agreement at that point. This was last, I don't know now, I can't remember, wait a minute, was it last year? It was last year, yeah. And so I suggested, you know, you have the opportunity to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals. He went, they denied him, and so then they proceeded forward to appeal the increase in assessment. So, this, we met with them instead of going to court and trying to battle it out, and we came to a settlement.
So, was the lawsuit filed? Did they file?
They filed, yeah, then we were going, but we didn't, we didn't ever go to the courts.
So, we had a meeting, their lawyers and our attorney, Marilyn, myself, and there's two years.
I see what you're saying.
Yep, of a revision.
This is a draft, this is what you actually want, want to put in? That's an actual agreement or?
Correct. Yes, we can't say it, obviously, until we vote aye. So, we wanted to have it ready so that we can get it done because we want to get it set and get our taxes in. So, the total for the two years, for 2013 and 2014, equals $12,726.34. And I broke each year that way. Marilyn calculated everything.
And this is for all these parts, the, just go in?
All three parcels.
All three parcels, just put it together.
Are you looking at, oh, you're looking at the stipulation?
Yeah, I should have asked.
Right?
So, yeah, so the difference between the taxes, the settlement amount and, you have the spreadsheet there, right?
Right here, yep.
And, and the agreed upon amount comes to $12,000.
The difference between the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I guess.
So, they.
Oh, no, 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 the difference. Well, the total of the two years is what I'm saying.
Right, right.
The total of the two years, if you add them together.
So, he was paying us a percentage on his taxes, so he's not, he doesn't owe us all those years, and, but unfortunately, it will be, not unfortunately, but it will be a refund of about $4,600 in tax.
Who, who represents this? This was, was this started when, was this the old council?
Matt Willis represented. He was in, he's been handling it from the beginning.
From the beginning.
So, he sensed to keep him there.
Does he recommend, he's recognized soon, he recommends, so he shouldn't sue.
Yes, yeah, it was his recommendation, and it's much cheaper to do it this way than he, than to go to court.
So, you gotta agree upon it to agree.
Yes.
I would think so, because, I mean, if you're talking about $12,000 difference, maybe, maybe two weeks' fees wouldn't add up to $12,000, add just something around there, make much sense to take this, so. Kind of logically, you take this small enough difference that you, I would recommend it would solve it as well if I was here. It's not much. Can you see a woman?
No.
You could eat that up in the court costs.
Right.
Or not, but you could, and you might lose.
Correct.
So, I guess I'll make a motion that we approve the, or we authorize first selectmen assigned stipulated judgments.
No.
I'll make a motion, we authorize the first selectmen assigned stipulated judgments presented. This is holding your hand.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No, good job. It'll come to a resolution, these things sometimes.
Yeah, she worked really hard on it.
Good work, good work.
Yeah, we negotiated back and forth, Marilyn.
We make any other decisions.
Yep, she did it right away. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so, there is a grant. So, we have a resol, we have to take this to a town meeting. The town meeting will be held next Thursday at 7:00 here? Firehouse. Firehouse, okay. And basically, it is a multi-town grant that we would like to participate in. So, it is for Belly Shore Emergency Communications, in cooperation with municipal partners, is seeking a grant to create a multi-site UHF system to provide enhanced communications to the rural volunteer, sorry, went too quick, for our rural volunteer firefighters and medical technicians. And the object is to phase in the new system over three years. The town of Essex has agreed to take the fiduciary responsibility and take the lead on this. So, basically, it's just the proposal, which we'll do at the town meeting. And it involves Chester, Deep River, Essex, Durham, Haddam, Killinworth, Line, Middlefield, O-line, and Westbrook. So, we need to apply for a total grant together. So, this gives us permission to be able to participate in this and be able to do that. All right? So, I basically just, I know I need to have a town, you know, we need to have people at the town meeting.
So, what we need to do is.
Basically, what we're voting on is to set up a town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set up a town meeting.
For what day do you get?
For.
Thursday, January 28th at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, on the agenda, we have appointments for Wetlands Commission. I just, what's the matter? I skipped, oh, tax refund, sorry, going too quick. Sorry, 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 sorry. Okay, we have two tax refunds. And one is for motor vehicle supplement refund, it's for Kenneth or Mary Byrd, for a total of $135.72. And then we have a real estate refund for Dominic and Patricia Manetti, in the amount of $75.19. Those are the only two I have.
Make a motion to accept those.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we get to appointments. All right, on the agenda, I need to add a few appointments. We have Wetlands Commission, we want to do appointments for EDC, and then ZBA alternate. So, a couple of things came up since we had posted the agenda, so I just want to update that. So, let's start with, let's just do ZBA alternate, probably the easiest thing to do. So, I guess Helen Ree had resigned back in September. It was approved by the Board of Selectmen to accept that resignation, and we would now like a recommendation to appoint a ZBA alternate, Tom Pachowski?
Pachowski.
Pachowski, I knew I was going to say that, I apologize. So, that is the first appointment, so why don't we do him?
I'll make a motion to appoint Tom Pachowski to serve out Helen Ree's ZBA alternate position, which I believe runs till November 2017.
Correct.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just to thank Helen for the time she served, she made a great job, again. Tough to find volunteers, so as always, thanks to Tom for stepping up to take her spot. He's a fantastic volunteer, he's a.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, let's do EDC. We have some openings on the Economic Development Committee. I have a letter from Kate Anderson, who is here, Ms. Kate, I saw you, expressing interest to become a member of EDC. I think we all received a letter.
Yes.
From Kate. So, I found. And also Lori Maggi, who was a member of EDC.
Yes.
Who had resigned for a period of time, is interested in going back on the board. She has time now.
That's good.
To dedicate to EDC. Are these?
Which are positions for?
Oh.
I don't think you have all of them.
Yeah. So, those are the two.
I'll make a motion to Kate Anderson and Lori Maggi onto EDC.
Do we know how long?
Well, it was until, we loaded, I think, it was years.
Yeah.
From the end of the day?
It was like an election.
I had this, I know we launched it up.
Are you sure it was three? I'm sure it's three, there's eight, and it goes, one of us that goes to me first.
Yeah, that's what I hear, the time is wrong. June. So, June 30th of 20, so it would have started, how does that work?
So, it follows the fiscal.
Everyone ends, yeah, yes, so it'll end in June 30th. So, if we go out.
They start their own term, right? And they're finishing someone's term, right?
No, they're not finishing anybody's term, they're starting their own term.
So, soon we would have to go two and a half years, then.
That's what I'm, yeah.
They go two and a half years, they start now, going through two and a half years, June 30th.
Of 2018.
Okay.
That's kind of scary, 18, okay. All right, so.
Did you second?
Girl, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, um, thank you, Kate, for volunteering. Kate had expressed interest before, brought it up, so I know she had met with some people on EDC, so it'd be great to have. And Lori, obviously, business owner, and been running a business in town for a long time, and was on the board, so obviously great to have her back, very smart, energetic person, very good to have in EDC.
They're two great additions to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have Wetlands Commission. So, I have an email from Mark Stevens, who's the chair of the Wetlands Commission. We had accepted Robin Molly's resignation, and Kurt Chadwick had agreed at their last meeting to accept, to fill out Robin's commissioner position, and that leaves two alternate positions. So, Gail Reynolds has offered to fill one of the alternate positions. It still leaves us with one other alternate position, and I have a number of people that are interested in that. So, if we can, I mean, Gail is here, but she's up at the town hall.
Yeah.
Attending another meeting, otherwise she would be here.
Sure. So, is it appropriate for me to make a motion to appoint Kurt Chadwick and Gail Reynolds?
Yeah, why don't we do that, just yet?
So, I'll make that motion to the Wetlands Commission.
All right, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Very glad to have.
Okay, and then next month, we'll, or next time, we'll do the other. All in favor?
Aye. So, it's still one more spot, and you've had some people interested.
There's still one more spot.
Sure.
Yep, some good candidates, too, so, which is good. Okay, new business built. Adam Land Trust.
Yes, Adam Land Trust. So, we're here tonight, again, in the DOKO, I'm the president of the Adam Land Trust. Should I set up a call? We are applying for an open space watershed acquisition land grant from State DEEP. And that grant is to purchase this parcel right here. So, this is the southeast corner of Haddam, the swing bridge is right about here, 154 runs down here, and this is 82, and it goes down to Route 9. This is the parcel, it's 130 acres. It became available on the market this year, and we became aware of it very quickly, and it's, it's a fabulous parcel from conservation standpoint. It provides a lot of connectivity. Basically, what you're looking at here is state forest around, lots of state forest around, this little pink parcel is actually Connecticut River Watershed Council property.
Give me some, I lost exactly where you are, you didn't know the point of reference.
Sorry, this is, this swing bridge here?
Yeah.
Okay, 154?
Yes.
82 swings down and catches Route 9?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was, I guess, I guess now, I know exactly where you are. Sure.
In any case, as far as, as conservation parcels go, this, this has it all. This has, this has streams on it, this has wetlands of at least three different types, fertile pools, it has a very large and a very exceptionally beautiful beaver pond on it, and there's also other marshlands of several different sorts, rock out properties. In any case, it's, it's, it also protects the upper watershed of a known Brook Trout stream. All these things are very important to the state, but they're also very important to us as the land trust, our goal being to conserve things and, you know, provide recreation. And so, we're applying for a grant from the state of Connecticut, basically. And what we're looking for tonight is a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen. I'll just show you, again, from an ecological standpoint, one of the things that's really important about this is what we call contribuity. But as you can see from this, this overhead aerial view, all this you're looking at here is, it's just a lot of forest, that's all it is. You can see on this property, there's, that's actually where the big beaver pond is. But what is, what's important for wildlife is these big blocks of forest, because they don't get interfered with. So, if you look beyond kind of where this dotted line is that I quote in, you see how it's kind of cut up? This is not especially good for wildlife. It's good for some wildlife, like deer, because they like the open spaces, but a lot of wildlife does not. And over here is actually where Tired of Bill is. So, one of the most important things in conservation is protecting these, these places. And obviously, it connects into the, it's not obvious, I missed that, but you can see how, again, how it connects these blocks of forest land and otherwise conserved land together. And that's really the biggest reason it's important. But also, it provides, you know, watershed protection, and, you know, as I say, there's, as far as the plan of conservation and development, this is pretty much the poster child for what, what the plan of conservation and development is looking for. So, so we're here tonight to ask for a letter of support.
So, I did allocate, they need, in the grant writing process, they needed money to be able to do that, so I did approve $2,500 to go out, to write the grant.
Of the grant.
To be able to acquire that property.
Have someone to, to get a grant writer, so.
Yes.
Which I'm believing you've already.
Yes.
She's got to be working on.
She is, she's very busy at the moment, yes.
Yes, it's due in the next few weeks.
How far south is that, like, from Route 9? Give me a half mile.
Well, Route 9 is here.
So, how, how far is?
Oh, how far is this?
As a crow fly.
Oh, um, yeah, kind of a mile.
Right here, a mile, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There are several hills that are run between that property and where Route 9 is. Mostly, you do hear noise, but it tends to be what, what's way down here in Chester more than what's over there.
Is it, realistically, is it something that would be, be able to be turned into some kind of recreational use, or it's just going to be a, is it a little spot, just mostly just to preserve?
Yeah, so part of what the state open space grant is about is recreation. They want people to be able to access the property. So, part of our goal is to encourage exactly that, but it, we've been laying out, preliminarily, laying out a trail system on the property. So, that's what, also part of the grant will be providing parking place. You know, again, this trail, this kind of multi-use trail system, the kinds of things that the state is looking for, bird watching is one of the things that actually people are really interested in, and this should be a really fantastic place for that. So, yeah, there's a lot of, you know, snow shilling and skiing and, you know, and it doesn't allow for active, you know, active activities, which would be like ATV and that kind of thing. It's all passive activities of various sorts. So, that's what we're really, that's what we're hitting on.
Yeah. And the grant, if you, if you're successful with the grant, that's part of the criteria of the grant.
Yes.
So, try to make it, at least for passive.
Yes, absolutely. It has to be open for, it has to be open for public use, yes.
Bill has, Liz Glidden is at the other meeting, but Bill has gone in and met with Liz, and she's aware of it, and she's in favor of it also. Yeah.
If our investment is only $2,500 to give us the chance to do this.
And the money was there, so.
Absolutely, it's been great, right? Get a shot at getting money like that. I'm glad it's going to be useful somehow, at least you do the best you can to make it available to people to use.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is, this is just a particular type of parcel that it, it just makes sense.
Yeah.
There's a lot to see there, it's really exceptionally pretty, and therefore, we're getting people into it for free.
So, you need a motion to, obviously, I'll make a motion that we, as the board, support the movement towards a grant, and you need approval from us for the $2,500.
No, it's already been, it's all set, so it's already in, it was already in the budget, it was there, it was $5,000 in, so we appropriated $2,500.
So, I mean, my motion will be that the Board of Selectmen support and approve the attempt to get a grant to purchase this parcel, and that we authorize the first selectmen to write the letters or anything, anything necessary that the conservation commission we need from us to help get that to the table.
Okay. I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Bill, just get me the info of what you need, get it together for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hi. One letter from the state of Connecticut, policy and management regarding the neglected cemetery grant award of $2,000. So, I need to sign this paperwork or return it to the state of Connecticut for us to receive the grant. So, I need.
Have you voted on that?
I think it's something you do every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something you do every year.
I'll make a motion to, to accept the grant, is that right?
Yes, it's $2,000.
We're not obligated to do anything except use $2,000, right?
Correct.
Obviously.
Yes.
Now, where does this money go, in the general fund?
No, I believe there's, there's a line item.
Well, we do have a couple, well, we had a four cemetery.
Cemetery line item.
Yeah.
That's an expenditure line, where is the income from? Or is it going to show up on the government's common list of items?
I do not know this answer to this question.
Either way, if it went into the general fund, it actually would go up there, right?
Yeah, I know that there, and the reason I can't answer that is I know they've been working on lines to try to allocate as grant dollars as we may, but I'm not really sure where Barbara and Georgia are at with that process.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would think the most important thing is to make sure that they know that that money went through.
Correct.
So, we can create a line.
Right.
To at least, to be able to, if anyone were to acquire, that we could use that money for.
That's right, and that's one of the things that they've been working on. Unfortunately, our software is a little limited to how to do that, so they've been keeping a separate spreadsheet, but that is the goal of what they're trying to do, to separate the grant funds.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, I did mention that we're having a town meeting on January 28th to, for the resolution for the UHF equipment through the ICE grant, that we're going to participate with the other towns. The other topic that is going to be at the town meeting, and this is just an FYI, the firehouse has been having issues there due to faulty workmanship, when the firehouse was built in 2000, and there's issues where the roofs come together in the eaves in a way, it's causing a water problem where it's leaking. So, there's an appropriation that needs to be made to cover that. It's about $5,800. There's a $5,000 deductible for the insurance company, and then the back wall where there is a window, the window does not have safety glass, and it's been rotting away over the past several years, where actually air can flow through. So, it's where the ramp is, so they're going to come in, they're going to take the window out, and they're actually going to close it up. So, that is going to cost approximately $7,000. Because of the funds being low in the building fund for the town, I went to the Board of Finance and asked the best way to handle this. The firemen have $11,000, maybe 11.3, left over from completed paving project that was put in capital. So, what we're going to do is go to a town meeting and request that those funds come back, and that we reappropriate them to go towards the work to be done at the firehouse. So, that is what will be the second piece on the agenda at the town meeting. The last thing I wanted to update was, we had received a steep grant in 2010, when Paul DiStefano was in office, and the purpose of that was to connect with water down in Chester. Chester also received funds at that time. Chester went and did their piece, however, Haddam was never able to finalize everything to get it done. So that money has been sitting there. The state will not allow us to have any other steep funds until we spend this, so it's $500,000. They are pushing, or were pushing, to take the money back. So what we did is we need to have a shovel-ready project for this, so it's not that I can hold it for anything. It has to fit certain specifications. So Jeff Jacobson, Liz Glidden, myself, and Phil Goff worked together to put a request in to reallocate the $500,000 so that the town could keep the money, and we put it towards doing improvements, a second phase to the green. So they're.
To the what?
To the green. So there'll be additional parking. We're looking to make Candlewood Hill a one-way. Put in more sidewalks. The thought is to tie things into as the Rossi property develops, it'll help with the museum. So we have not heard back from the state, we probably won't for six weeks, but the deadline for the new steep grant funds were due by January 15th, so we knew we needed to get that in. So just as an update, I'm just making it publicly known that we're waiting for that reappropriation to see if we're able to do that. And it fit all the specifications, so it'll help with parking for the farmer's market. So there's a lot of benefits of what it will provide. So it's just an update. And the last thing, because I'm going to need volunteers, I am going to just bring it up under new business. Our charter is in desperate need of being revised. I have the specifications to do the charter revision through the statute. And I'm going to need to put together a panel, a commission of no less than five members and no more than 15, and to split it up between political parties. So I'm just making that announcement tonight, so if anyone is interested in participating, please feel free to reach out, and then we can vote on this at the next meeting, because there's a timetable and a timeframe that we have to follow to put everything together. So I didn't want to just spring it up at a meeting. It does. Yep. So just, we'll put it on the agenda for February 3rd. Okay, so that's all I have. Either of you have any new business?
No.
All right, public comments. Yes?
Just a point of order, save you guys a step with a three-person board. I noticed the last four meetings you have been seconding each vote. You don't have to do that on a three-person board, that'll save you some time. A little info on the cemetery grant, this is the first year they're actually offering it. And Haddam was very fortunate to be the first one to submit the grant, so I'm glad that it came through. One quick question on the executive session, can you just explain a little bit about it for us?
Municipal agent reappointment.
Will you be reappointing the agent in the executive session?
I'm not sure what we can talk about. I don't know what we can talk about executive session, I'll be honest with you. If we're talking about employee, I don't know if we can say anything.
You can't vote in an executive session.
Can't vote, you have to come out and vote.
Right.
So you can't appoint anybody to vote on it?
Right.
Not in executive session. Or should we even be saying what?
Nope. I don't think so, it's why it's executive session.
Well, what is it, you'll be discussing each candidate in the executive session?
I don't feel comfortable saying anything about more than what I already answered. So, I don't know, the two of you have something else to say.
I don't know anything, so I couldn't, I don't know anything to say, so. I don't have any info.
So then, when you come out, will you come get us, the people that are still here, before you make any decisions and votes?
Yeah, usually what we do is if we need to find a quiet place, or we have to ask people to leave the room to have an executive session, when we come out of executive session, summon the people who wanted to go to see, and we have to start arguing. I mean, it wouldn't be over.
So you'll do that for us, then?
Yeah, we'll have to have it here, because there's another meeting up at the town office building.
Okay, so somebody will come out and wave outside for us?
I just have a quick question, if I may. Marilyn Bowman said that this settlement, because it's a reval year, it's all going to go away? Is that what she said, or was she saying something else is going to all go away?
It gave her an opportunity in 2013, there was an opportunity to revale the property, so she did. So that's what that was about. But another revale, as you know, for 2015 is being done right now.
Right, so this settlement is for behind.
Is for 13 and 14, correct.
Okay.
Yes. Anyone else?
I'm going to make a motion to move to executive session.
Thank you. Any special? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
So you can have an executive session at what time?
8:25.
Sometime. Okay, I have an executive session. I'll make a motion to a year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.